Is it in here?
Can't drive it, all you can do is listen to the radio.
Katie, we have, we have five commission representatives today.
Katie, we have, we have five commission representatives today.
Barely there.
Yeah.
Just made it. It's a heavy agenda, so.
There's a couple of additions I have.
For this meeting or the next one?
DDA.
DDA, okay.
We'll show adjourned.
Yeah, right. It's pretty, it's pretty light on this one, I feel like.
Katie, updates are underway.
Called it, yeah. Clearly needed.
It's just had it on yesterday. Just at the council meeting yesterday with this same apparatus. Yeah, probably, yes. Now, there might be some turds to that.
Guys, ready?
I'm off for the week.
Sure. Go. Six thirty, we will call the order of the February eighteenth Planning Commission Meeting for City of Gibraltar, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Katie, can you call the roll, please?
Sure. Baker, Bilk, Cox.
Here.
Frizone.
Here.
Hutchinson.
Here.
Mendoza Bach, Payet, Upholzer.
Here.
Wood.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Uh, can we get a motion to excuse absent members?
Motion to excuse.
Second.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Do we have public comment for matters on the agenda? All right. Next, we'll be looking for approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, next, we have the approval of the Planning Commission Meetings of January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second to motion.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no acknowledgement of correspondence. Do we have any public comment for matters that are not listed on the agenda? We have no unfinished business, no new business, there are no postponed or referred items. Uh, Commissioner Forum? Anybody got anything?
Not for Planning Commission.
Okey-dokey, are you looking for?
Yeah, I do have a question. Why don't we have a sheets coming into Gibraltar?
Our what?
Why is no sheets coming to Gibraltar? Every other community is like loaded up with Planning Commission issues with a sheets coming to their community. Why don't we have a sheets coming here?
Moving to... I don't have an answer for you.
Just obser- observation.
Mo- most.
Sheets is the gas stations.
Gas stations.
They're, they're, they're going all over Metro Detroit, they're expanding into Michigan, and most communities are rejecting them, and, and.
It's kind of like Buc-Ee's.
Well, it's a miniature version of Buc-Ee's.
They probably don't have a property, not unless they're gonna go out on Gibraltar Road, because they're huge.
I just find it ironic that all these communities are rejecting them, and, and we'd love to see more businesses come to Gibraltar, so, just an observation.
Are usually like in the highway corridors type stuff, yeah.
Not, not really on the highway, though. They're, they're, they're more in the communities, actually, so.
Oh, really?
Royal Oak and everything else.
Other than Royal Oak and.
Yeah.
Lo- Livonia just rejected sheets because the residents were in our uproar. I think that was maybe like seven mile, it was on seven mile somewhere.
I wonder what the backstory is.
They said it was caused, uh, too much traffic in the mil- mil- middle of the night and with the, with, uh, backing up the houses, they'd.
Oh, they're twenty-four-seven.
Yeah.
Got it.
That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for your opinion.
Uh, looking for a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I support.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All righty.
That was a very efficient Planning Commission meeting. Uh, I want to thank you for being here for the Downtown Development Authority Meeting, so let's call that an order. Katie, can you please call roll?
Schumate.
Here.
Baker, Bilk, Cox.
Here.
Frizone.
Here.
Hutchinson.
Here.
Mendoza Bach, Payet, Upholzer.
Here.
Wood.
Here.
Thank you. May we get a motion to excuse absent members?
Motion to excuse absent members.
Is there a second?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Uh, is there any public comment this evening for our Downtown Development Authority? That will close our, uh, public comment. Uh, Commission Members, uh, this evening, not only do we have a time-sensitive need for item A under new business, which is a primary driver for holding this meeting despite a lack of broader agenda items, uh, but I have some recommendations for, uh, additional items to be placed on the agenda. Uh, one item that I'd like to have you consider, uh, is going to be, uh, from our Finance Director, and it is a twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five DDA budget as of two eighteen twenty-five. Um, I want to make sure that if you can consider this motion to add, uh, we could put this, uh, under acknowledgement of correspondence as item A.
Motion to add the twenty-four, twenty-five DDA budget under acknowledgement of correspondence.
Great. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? Uh, we have our Finance Director who's came tonight.
Is this just an update?
Yeah, exactly. One of the, uh, actions we had, uh, from our last meeting together was there were some questions around finances or budget, um, so we thought it would be great to have Finance Director McEwen here, not only with an update, but able to answer any questions that you may have as Commission Members. So that will close the discussion unless there's any further discussion, and I'll have, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. So we have item A under acknowledgement of correspondence as our budget update, as motioned and, uh, approved. Uh, the next item that I'd like to have, uh, Commission Members consider, uh, is I will have a handout for you as you consider this. Uh, this is a printout. Uh, to give you the appropriate backdrop, the, uh, motion we'll be looking for is to add a item under new business, item B, a request from the Baker family. Uh, for, uh, for background for Commission Members, uh, Mr. Baker is here this evening and come join me at the podium if he so chose to add it to the agenda. Uh, in honor of CJ Baker, uh, the family has done an immense amount to work with our community, uh, to memorialize not only the soccer setup, uh, but, uh, Mr. Baker has requested us to consider, uh, as you can see in the photo and the text thread that I've printed out for you, uh, a rock to be placed by the basketball court, uh, in memorial of CJ Baker. And so we'll get to that item if you so choose, but I wanted you to have a physical image to, uh, backdrop on the discussion that we would have. So, uh, Commission Members, I'd be looking for a motion to add item B under new business, a request from the Baker family.
Motion to add discussion around potential installation of the memorial rock under item B in new business.
Great. Is there a second for that motion?
Support.
Second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Is this the rock?
That is the rock. Uh, well, I'm not sure if that is the actual rock. Mr. Baker, do you want to address that question?
Is this a picture of the rock that you want to move, or is it just a?
This, it's for scale.
Okay.
We haven't picked a rock yet.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because that's, that's a big, a big rock.
Big rock. And that, that's, I wanted to make sure that everyone understood the scale that I'm talking about.
Well, if that's your wife, she's what, five something?
Um, not, not my wife, but someone that's helping us.
She looks like about five something, maybe feet. That's a good sized rock.
Yes.
So, so that discussion, well, if it's, uh, if in voted in favor, we'll have a deeper discussion if it's on the agenda. Uh, but any other clarification questions for the agenda, uh, motion requested? All right, we'll have you come up a little bit later after the vote. Thank you. Any further discussion on the, uh, addition to the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Uh, so that will be carried, and we'll put item B as, uh, discussion of memorial rock request?
Under new business, correct?
Under new business, item B, correct. Um, lastly, Commission Members, um, we had, uh, some discussions, uh, through our city administrator, uh, on some updated considerations from our building department. Um, it's really around, uh, ordinance language and, uh, building department fee schedule. Um, I wanted to bring this just for awareness purposes, and City Administrator Blackburn would love to address that if you so chose to add it on your agenda. No action from you, all of this would have to be, uh, discussed and reviewed with council, uh, but wanted to make sure you had visibility given the scope of your roles on commission. So, uh, the item that we would be looking to add, which would be item C under new business, would be updates on building department from City Administrator Blackburn. If you so chose, we would need a motion to add that.
Make a motion to add it to the agenda.
Motion by Wood, is there a second for that motion?
Support.
Uh, any, uh, further discussion before we vote on that motion? Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Uh, so that will be updates on building department as item C under new business, uh, and it will be led by City Administrator Blackburn. Um, thank you all for those considerations. Uh, a couple of those were, uh, hot items that came up after the agenda had been solidified, so I want to make sure that you had visibility to it. Um, and it, both of those additions, B and C, would not be any formal action required from you, rather, uh, for your awareness and discussion purposes. Uh, with that, um, we now have a approved agenda with the additions to the acknowledgement of correspondence, as well as the new business section. So that will take us into, uh, the next agenda topic, which is approval of previous meeting minutes. Commission Members, in your packets, you have minutes for item A, DDA minutes of one twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five. We'd be looking for a motion to approve DDA minutes of one twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Cox, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Any discussion on the meeting minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Uh, now I'll call your attention to the, uh, updated agenda item A, uh, which is our DDA budget as of two eighteen twenty-twenty-five. I'll welcome Finance Director McEwen, uh, so that she can address that with you accordingly. Thank you.
Is A the?
No.
A is, oh, and acknowledgement, I'm sorry. We put it in the up one. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. Good to go.
Am I allowed to have an action item with acknowledgement stuff, or no?
Uh, this would be acknowledgement correspondence, so we would not have an action unless Katie
Typically, we just receive and file it, but.
I was gonna request something for beautification as well, so, um, with, would I do that, or would I have to come back up?
Katie, procedurally, are you?
Sorry, I should be looking at.
I mean, I, I would say just add it to the agenda.
We, we just approved the agenda minute, or the agenda before.
I had an agenda, yeah.
I'd, I'd, I'd go back and move it from a corris- I mean, I was a correspondence to an agenda item is what I would recommend we do.
Okay.
We gotta knock.
Okay. Well, I can come back and do that, but I can do the actual reviewing with you guys really quick. So the top part consists of all the revenues and items that are coming in. Um, it's got the tax collections, the interest, the bond interest, miscellaneous revenue donations, beautification revenue, fund balance, Fourth of July, um, farmer's market, bond proceeds, and the bond issuance costs. Um, the bottom part has like a bunch of expenses broken out, but then if you go to the very bottom with all those pretty italic looking words, um, that is all broken out of that capital improvements, that two four eight nine eight three. That's all broken out of that, and that's the amounts that have been spent. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that. So like, I guess there was, um...
I was actually gonna, oh, keep going, and then I'll go.
I'm, I guess there was a question about like music in the park. Um, that all comes out of that capital improvements budget, and we've only spent six hundred so far in this fiscal year, which is almost seventy-five percent done. Crazy. Um, but that's how much we've spent so far for this year.
Is that part of the capital improvements, or the, uh, capital improvements projects?
It's all part of the capital improvements.
Okay, so projects is separate, that eighty-two grand?
Yes. That's like the fund, that's the fund balance, that is the current fund balance in the account. So that's the extra, like, say, savings that is currently in the DDA account.
Which one, the projects or the other one?
The projects.
Okay.
I, I can't, I have to, um, make sure I break it out properly, so I can't use like, I have to say that it's being kind of saved up for something, so I had to have a line for it. So I picked projects because we plan to spend it out in the future. Does that make sense?
It does. Is there a way?
Sorry, I'm stuttering.
No, that's fine. Is there a way to put capital improvements as the bottom row, since the items below it are the subcategories?
Yeah, there's definite, I can definitely do that. This is all in Excel, so it's super easy to just readjust.
And then would this, would the year-to-date twenty-four, twenty-five be representative of those items? Well, it is, I guess it's above, so it's forty-nine, two sixty-one, correct?
Yep, that's all that's been spent so far.
Okay.
Now, the, the expenses that we've, or the budgets that we've approved for music in the park and Fourth of July, tho- do those actually kick into the twenty-five, twenty-six budget because they're after June thirtieth?
Yeah.
Fourth of July and music in the park, correct? They will both kick into the next.
So that's why those expenditures look different right now on here, such a small amount?
Yeah. So you'll see, like, once we start doing music in the park, don't we start in June, actually?
I believe so.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so then you're gonna start seeing that tick up.
Expenditures at that point, and then the next fiscal year kicks in.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's almost like you could, oh, you can't, I don't think you can do that on a fiscal one. You could show like a twenty-five, twenty-six, the items that would carry over that are within the calendar year. That'd be kind of confusing, though, from a accounting perspective.
Yeah, I feel like it's almost confusing in a way, too, because of the way it cuts off, especially for DDI, DDA with the Fourth of July, because that's like your biggest budgetary item.
It's right in the middle.
And it's like.
It's at the end of one and the bein- yeah.
Yeah, so I feel like it kind of makes it a little confusing. And a lot of your expenditures actually end up happening in the summer because you have all the fertilizing and things that occur, all of those items all usually end up happening in the summertime.
Um, okay, so we'll be able to move the capital improvements row down?
Yep.
These are subcategories. And then some of these were like, uh, like, should they stay, or are they like one-offs? I don't know the answer to that. I feel like, because I know, I remember when we added some, like, we randomly added some of these, remember? Like, a while ago?
Yeah.
Like, some of them, if they're gonna be there, they should stay, but then some of them, I don't know.
I can definitely like kind of take a look and see if I can get rid of some of them.
It's a condenser, I just like, my brain's, I have like clean.
I get it.
Financial.
I get it. This was just kind of something that I've had for a while, so I kind of kept it the same just in case. Um, but I have no problem because I prefer a cleaner, too.
Thank you.
Uh, so since that is under acknowledgement of correspondence, uh, we'd be looking for a motion, uh, to receive and file, obviously with the, uh, commentary from Finance Director McEwen and some of the, uh, I would say, uh, layout considerations you all have expressed. Finance Director McEwen, before we get to that, uh, receiving file, one other discussion item that came up, uh, from Commissioner Bilk last time was around how the DDA budget is, uh, I'd, uh, I would say identified, and then subsequently approved. And the question came in context of some of the funding, uh, and like parks and recreation related items, um, on how we look at year-over-year allocations and what that process looks like. Can you just maybe speak to the kind of the DDA budget process, uh, and how we determine light item expenditure, uh, or forecast related to year-over-year trends?
Okay, um, so like with revenues and stuff, I kind of go over what has come in per each year, and then usually the, um, the salaries and stuff are usually just adjusted by inflation. Um, all of the items on the bottom, um, that's actually one of the items that I had as my action item, kind of like have been either set before me or are kind of approved by you guys moving forward. So like when people come up to you and they approve, like the carnival and stuff for Fourth of July, that ends up being part of the budget. And since it's all coming out of that nine-eight-three account, we have a pretty, as you can see, a pretty healthy amount of money in that nine-eight-three account, which is basically that account that you kind of allocate for stuff throughout the year.
So it's, you basically take like historical spend for the next fiscal year for some of these, the salaries, you take adjusted by inflation or whatever contractual agreements exist.
Yes.
And then the other items are based off historical spend, and then we come back and approve any offset changes to those potentially.
Yes.
Okay.
You're so nice.
I mean, it makes sense, it's.
He's nice.
Yeah, right? We have a great chair. Um, I figured we'd take advantage of Finance Director McEwen's presence, because I know that was a topic that came up in the last discussion, so thank you, uh, for addressing that. Um, so right now, we'd be looking for a motion to receive and file the, uh, the budget, uh, correspondence, uh, as highlighted by Finance Director McEwen.
I got a question about the nine-hundred thousand dollars. It says that expected balance of bond could be even higher.
Please, I'll let Finance Director McEwen speak to that if you don't mind.
I like that nine-hundred grand, you know?
I, I know you do. Um, that is currently earning interest, so depending on whatever the interest is, is gonna depend on what that amount ends up being.
Okay.
So.
Are you gonna, you gonna make more interest off? That's what you're telling us now?
Um, I hope so. I hope we're gonna start spending it down soon.
Well, you're paying for money that, you know, somebody screwed.
We already have one project going on that is going to start, uh, wind, winding that down right now.
All right.
Yeah, and that can only be used for items that were advertised. So we can't just randomly say that that nine-hundred thousand dollars is going to fix the carpet in this room because we didn't advertise that, so.
Okey-dokey.
Or fix your chairs, because.
Just, just so you guys know, um, the HVAC units are being replaced at the Talbot Community Center right now. That is one of the things coming out of the bond, that was a hundred and eight thousand dollars for that. Um, another thing is I'm just about done with the specs for the new roof for City Hall, which was also in the DDA bond, so that'll be coming out, out there once that's done.
Yeah.
Those are two, two items right now. Um, and City Council also approved, um, for, um, start looking at getting the parking lots repaved, and, um, that's just been approved. We just gotta do specs and stuff and get that out to bid. So, um, we got the, the HVAC going on right now, then the roof, and then, then the, the par- par- parking lots will be going out for bids soon, and that's go, all go to the DDA bond.
Yeah, I appreciate you and the team for getting to work, and I know Councilman Cox has, uh, played a role in approving a lot of those items as it relates to the spend for those. Commissioner Wood, do you have any other feedback or comments on that?
No, no.
Any other feedback or comments on that item?
Nope, you're the man.
Make a motion to receive and file the updated, uh, DDA budget as provided by the Finance Director.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Um, that will move us to unfinished business, uh, for which there is none this evening. Uh, so let's jump into new business. Uh, before we get into the items that are approved, A through C, just procedurally, Katie, maybe, uh, I'd love your input on this. Uh, since I don't know if it's appropriate to be going back to approval of the agenda for addition of an item, perhaps City Administrator Blackburn, i.e. DDA Director Blackburn in this forum, um, could request any action required related to the budget item under your DDA Director report. Uh, if Finance Director McEwen has a beautification-related matter, to me, that might be most appropriate to live there, unless any Commission Members disagree. Yeah, so I, I would say procedurally, I, I would feel more comfortable with that versus going, uh, in reverse, back up our agenda. Um, so when we get to that, uh, portion, DDA Director forum, I'm gonna have you two come up to the podium, and you can work with City Administrator, i.e. DDA Director Blackburn for this forum on that topic. Uh, item A, uh, item A, uh, I wanted to make sure it was one of the priority, uh, time-sensitive items for this evening. Uh, Commission Members, I'm really grateful for your, uh, support and approvals related to our Fourth of July festivities, uh, including fireworks and all other matters that need to be addressed to make that possible. If you recall in our last meeting, uh, we had brought forth two different organizations, uh, that had proposals for carnival, uh, activities. Uh, obviously, we come on a backdrop of having to, uh, cancel the carnival festivities last year due to safety concerns. Uh, the, uh, contracts, uh, were shared with you, the proposals were shared with you. If you recall, uh, you had approved Wade Shows as one of the two organizations, uh, but your actions for me in that discussion were, uh, twofold. One was I have the, uh, city attorney make sure that there's a robust review, uh, and, uh, audit of the contract agreement before any signatures. And then item two was really around, uh, gathering feedback from our peers. So in coming to you tonight, both items have been completed. Um, so here's the synopsis. Uh, our attorney , uh, reviewed the contract, uh, and made direct revisions to the contract to make sure that our city attorney felt comfortable with the contract structure. So there are primarily additions, uh, related to what the attorney felt were most appropriate to be included. Um, s- and secondarily, uh, the attorney had reassured us, uh, and I have a printout if anybody wants to read it directly, but it's in your packet as well. So if you look at, uh, section four, insurance and indemnification, uh, the amusement company Wade Shows, uh, shall maintain and provide proof of liability insurance with coverage limits of at least two million dollars per occurrence to fully protect and indemnify it against any and every possible claim for accidents, injuries, or liabilities to employees, participants, and all their persons which might arise in connection with the preparation, operation, removal of the carnival show. Um, so the other item was making sure we had our, our insurance policy coverages, uh, also included in the contract. Uh, so that kind of takes care of one. The city attorney has stamped and endorsed and added language of the contract to further, uh, protect the City of Gibraltar and all in it. Uh, item two, the insurance, uh, uh, two million dollar, uh, guarantee is included in said contract. Uh, as far as the second item you've asked me to look into, uh, I spoke with our neighbors in Wyandotte, I'm sorry, Woodhaven, uh, Uncle Sam Jam, obviously, is a large festivity Wade Shows does. Um, and they had a couple of commentaries. Uh, one, they have continued to contract with Wade Shows, and, uh, the, I don't want to quote, but the general sentiment was we wouldn't continue our partnership if we had any fundamental concerns. And obviously, you can imagine the scale of that is larger than the scale of our operation here in twelve to fourteen rides for our Fourth of July. Uh, item two was they said they were very attentive and responsive. Uh, as assembly and operation and dismantle and departure was taking place, there was tactical obstacles that may have arisen, but they were all managed very effectively with Wade Shows and the personnel and staffing they had. So, uh, it was good, good to check in with our neighbors. Uh, obviously, they are doing a larger scale and multi-year commitment, uh, with Wade Shows, so, uh, it was good peace of mind. Um, obviously, nothing's a guarantee, but good peace of mind for us as a City of Gibraltar, that our neighbors are supportive of that partnership. So, wanted to make sure I came back to you with both those items, um, but it was very important that we finalized the signature and the execution of the agreement. So, uh, you had given a conditional, uh, motion last time on those two items. If you feel those two items are now satisfied, I would love your motion to execute the agreement, uh, with Wade Shows for our Fourth of July carnival agreement. Now, before you do that motion, there was a email that I received in conjunction with our city attorney review, as well as the, uh, the exchange with Wade Shows, and, um, they gave a little bit of, uh, flavor on some of the approaches they'll take, so I just want to read this to you. We will offer an, an advanced online sale on our website for unlimited ride wristbands. Uh, we'll get that active in about April. All the event information will be on Wade Shows website by the end of the month as well. Ride wristbands for one day will be twenty-five dollars in advance, or thirty-five dollars if purchased the day of the event. At the ticket box, riders can also buy individual ride tickets, too. So they give different options for how to, uh, structure that, um, but they'll obviously, you know, make that, uh, information well, av- available well in advance. Um, and obviously, they, they, they ground up staff and, and, uh, execute while Fourth of July festivities are taking place. And, uh, as we mentioned in the last meeting, they won't have any, uh, camping taking place, uh, in the City of Gibraltar. Um, they will be camping outside of the community, so.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah. Try and, try and read your mind, Commissioner Wood, so.
Yeah.
Glad I did. Um, so with that being said, I'd be looking for a motion for the approval of the contract for final signature.
Motion to approve the, uh, final contract with Wade Shows, uh, for signature for the Fourth of July carnival.
Motion by Commissioner.
Support.
Second by Chair Hudson Chin. Uh, any further discussion on that item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Uh, that has been approved. I will execute the signature in partnership with our clerk. Um, next item, uh, is gonna be around, um, the memorial rock, uh, request that you received. So I wanna give you that, a printout in advance. I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Baker, if you don't mind, just stepping up, maybe they have some questions for you. Uh, Commission members, we just wanna make sure you had your eyes on this, uh, request. Obviously, City Administrator Blackburn can work with, uh, applicable parties, uh, to, uh, pursue this if, uh, if you so choose. Uh, but I wanna make sure we could have your input. So, Mr. Baker, uh, this is our commission, and any questions for Mr. Baker around the proposal that you see in front of you?
Hi, Mr. Baker. Is your plan to put, um, like, a plaque on it, or engraving, or?
Um, there will be, so, eh, we're hoping to be able to engrave this rock. Engravers like very flat surfaces to work from. And we don't, we don't know what rock it's going to be yet. I know I want a rock. But we gotta go out and get one. There are a couple of places that we're, we're looking at. This rock is, as you can imagine, it's very large, it's very expensive to transport, it's very expensive just for the rock. I don't wanna move forward with anything specific. As far as it, it's, and I'll be more than happy when we pick the rock to bring that back to you guys, but I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page. And that we understand the size and scope of what we're doing. And, like, a rock this big, they unload it off the trailer, it may not land.
Where you want it.
Where you want it. So we may actually have to bring in a piece of equipment and turn it to have the side up that, that it can be engraved. So that, that's what I know right now.
Cool.
But like I said, I wanted to make sure that we understood the scope, the size.
Yeah.
Of, of what we're talking about here. And just for reference, if, if that is a, the picture is, is not a reference that, that you grasp or that is in your wheelhouse, go look at the rocket, Carlson.
Yeah.
The Carlson High School rock. R- roughly, it's that size. That's what we're looking for.
Just better make sure where you want it first, 'cause it ain't moving. I want you.
It, no, but the rock weighs about forty thousand pounds.
Yeah.
Roughly. So, we, we've worked with the city, the soccer nets over there, we moved it over on the side of the building. You know, we worked with, uh, sorry, City Administrator Blackburn, the, the basketball court, all the cracks got filled last year. We worked with the city to make sure that the, you know, the city was good. We had somebody that had insurance and all that stuff. All that's done. Uh, the rotary is, got a couple basketball nets already. Um, I'm working with them, getting quotes right now to do the installation of that. And the guy that did the cracks, I can't remember who it was, I don't know if you remember, Mr. Blackburn.
Was it Al's paving?
It might have been Al's paving. But I've already got them lined up to come back in the spring, and that entire basketball court and, uh, skate park, they're gonna come back, and we're gonna have all that resurfaced. It's, I don't know, maybe resurface maybe isn't the word I'm looking for.
Seal coat?
Seal coat. They're gonna seal coat it, so there won't be any inconsistencies. The kids aren't gonna be tripping, skateboards aren't gonna be catching, all that stuff. We're gonna have all that redone this spring and, and whatever else that park needs to, to memorialize CJ. And we're looking for the finishing touch is the rock.
And the the location is by the basketball court or by the skate park area? What's?
Those are the same place.
Well, I mean, the.
Basketball court and the, the skate park are inside the same fence.
Uh, there's basketball nets in there? I guess I never noticed.
They're not in there. They're going, they're going to be in there.
Oh.
I believe the basketball nets are actually at.
Yeah, they're at the community center.
No, they're, the new ones.
Oh, the new ones.
That are gonna make the new court. So, right, there's, there's a court in the parking lot, right?
Right, yeah.
That's what I thought.
That is not a court. The basket, the basketball hoops are broken, the, the pavement is terrible, there's cars parked there sometimes.
But I guess, that's what, that's what I was thinking.
This is a new basketball court that's going to be next to the skate park inside that fence.
So the skate park's gonna be smaller?
The area, God, I can't.
Be the west side of it is just gonna be dedicated to the basketball.
West side's unused. It's not gonna change any of the scope of the, the skate park.
Skate park, alright.
The skate park, give or take, is about one-third of that fenced-in area. The other two-thirds is simply blacktop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's, there's nothing there. So there's plenty of room. There's probably actually room for two basketball courts side by side. That's how much space is there. But right now, we're planning on, on one that'll be on the, the west end.
So this rock gonna be anywhere near the nets? You're not gonna put that rock by the nets, right? By the pole for the nets?
No, sir. No, no. Um, so there's a fence around that.
So it's gonna be outside the skate park?
Yeah, outside, in the grass.
Alright.
There's a tree there, there's a light post, light post there, um, for light in the, in, in the skate park and the basketball court.
In the ice rink there, that's her.
Yep, but it'd be further to the west. So there's a sidewalk there, there's a strip of grass there that's fifty feet wide or something, and we would, would put it right there.
Okay.
And then have the engraving.
So it's not gonna be inside where they're playing ball or anything?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Alright.
No.
I don't have an issue.
Any other questions, concerns?
Good idea, I guess.
Yeah, it'll look nice.
I, uh, I know we speak for everybody, and just we're very grateful for what you and the family have done to memorialize CJ Baker and to ultimately improve our community offerings for the youth, uh, basketball court, the pavement, and everything you've done. It's just, thank you.
We're more than happy to do it, to make sure that the kids of Gibraltar have a safe place to go play anytime they want. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commission members, for the discussion. I wanna make sure you had your eyes on that. Uh, we'll work with City Administrator Blackburn, um, and applicable stakeholders moving forward to help support the family in pursuing that. Um, the next item is the, uh, last item that was added to your agenda this evening, and it is the update on the Building Department. Uh, City Administrator Blackburn, do you wanna comment on, uh, those items?
Um, Building Department's been working the last couple of months to just update the, the fee schedule for, uh, permits. The fee schedule was a little outdated. The Building Department looked at all the surrounding cities, um, in the area and kinda was like middle of the road. Um, we weren't, aren't gonna be the most expensive, but we ain't gonna be the cheapest e- either. Um, they need to be looked at every, every so, so often, just to up, update with the cost of everything going up, the cost of labor and everything else, they just need to be looked at from time, time to time. So, um, on the City Council's agenda for Monday, there will be a, uh, update for, uh, permit fees for the Bu- Bu- Building Department.
Can I ask, uh, how much money have they made off the permits coming into this town?
That really depends. Um, Amy would be able to get that information, but it de- it depends on how much building goes on in the town.
I understand that part.
Um, with the fees that are collected, um, they keep ninety-five percent. We get five percent back for administration costs. So the more updates residents do, the more money the city can make.
Well, I know, but if we had our own building department, we'd be making all the money.
Um, they, the fees were not that high. I think they were, I think year-to-date was probably around forty thousand, maybe. And you would be paying to get, if you were, get inspectors, they would be part-time, but you would still be, you'd be well over that. You'd be at part-time, they'd probably be asking for thirty-five, forty dollars an hour.
And, and this is the exact reason why I wanna make sure City Administrator Blackburn could flag this with this Commission member, so we'll take that feedback.
And then, um, because that, that also includes, they also, that's the, the four different inspectors and the office per- personnel to do that. That means we would ha- have to hire a full-time office person. And with benefits, that'd be well over what, um, what they're charging us now.
Who started the insight into the fee schedule? Who brought that to our attention? Was it, was it the Building Department?
Yes.
So McKenna brought it to us?
McKenna brought it up, and they did, um, they did research of the, um, surrounding ci- ci- cities and seeing what the fees were, 'cause some of them were outdated, and, um, a lot of them were, were outdated. 'Cause, um, I'm also looking at fees in different areas also that are way outdated, that need to be changed also.
And Commissioner Cox, it was aligned with your inquiry. The, I did ask on the second topic that he mentioned, which was also brought to our attention via McKenna directly. I asked, uh, that we have a Building Department representative at the council meeting on Monday for questions. Um, and I wanna make sure that was more of an information sharing, uh, overview from our Building Department.
That's why there's no action on this for us.
Yeah, correct. It's, I wanna make sure it's an FYI, uh, for this commission. That's why I'd ask to have it added. Um, and then council will be tasked with not only hearing out from City Administrator Blackburn and our Building Department, uh, but our Building Department representative hopefully can answer our questions that we have before we pursue any action.
And then, um, also, it's gonna be, um, go ahead.
Can I answer John's questions? It was a hundred and sixteen thousand at the mid-year review.
Thank you.
And then also at the council meeting, too, um, there's gonna be, uh, Building Department officials gonna be there to update on the building codes and to, um, adopt the current buil- building codes according to the state of Michigan right now. Because we are behind on that.
So, Commission members, wanna make sure you had a heads up on both items, since they just came into our camp. Uh, Councilman Cox and I will have that on our, uh, council discussion.
I think right now, the state of Michigan recognizes the two thousand fifteen building code as the current one. They have not updated themselves, and if they ever update, um, to a two thousand eighteen or higher building code, then we will.
How we approved Muni code, uh, language.
We, we, we did work through that. So these are the questions that I think we can clarify on, uh, on Monday, for sure. I agree with that sentiment.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, uh, City Administrator Blackburn, for the update. Just wanna make sure commission's aware. Uh, Commissioner Wood, we'll take your feedback in context of the broader McKenna Department discussions. Uh, Councilman Cox, you and I will have that on our list for Monday.
There's a lot of people out, there's a lot of people out there wanna know how much.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, the good news is.
My minds wanna know.
Everything is, uh, public information, so I wanna make sure that we're transparent about that, for sure.
Some of the people don't know where this building is, you know, and they're afraid to talk.
Come on and hang out. Um, with that being said, uh, that closes our, uh, uh, new business, uh, names A through C. Uh, for DDA Director Port, just hitting its most procedurally sound approach. Uh, City Administrator Blackburn, that's your report, but I wanna make sure Amy can come up, 'cause she might have something you'd like to have considered for budget.
Yep, I have a budget update from Amy as my report.
So I was gonna request that we increase the beautification budget from ten thousand to fifteen thousand. Um, they did purchase, uh, Kubota this year for warding, watering out of their budget. And, um, we wanted to give, I'm stumbling. I hate getting up in front of people, I'm so sorry. And the purpose of giving beautification more funds is to help, um, make the city's downtown area more welcoming through various items such as lighting, flowers, trees, painting, and benches. Also, I think moving forward, we should have it at fifteen thousand, just because there's been so much increases in prices. Beautification usually keeps well within their budget, they're very good about it, they have their eyes on it constantly. Um, and I think that, that's not too big of an ask to go from the ten thousand to the fifteen thousand to help them beautify our city.
What did we end up spending on the Kubota?
Two thousand five hundred parts. There's some parts and stuff that they need to purchase for it as well.
Plus the water tank, the pump.
Whoa.
So, I think the idea when we originally authorized the purchase of the UTV for watering, right, was understanding that there was gonna be a potential request on a budget increase, because they're not normally going to pay for a piece of equipment out of a beautification commission budget.
Big call. The total was twenty-five hundred?
Two thousand five hundred, yeah.
Total's twenty-five hundred. We have a resident that worked for a company, and he was able to give us a good deal, 'cause if we did not buy it, they were gonna, uh, sell it.
Yeah.
Sell it at auction, probably make two, two and a half times what they made, but, uh.
Well, I'd like to give a shout-out to John Sont, who researched this and, and.
John, John Sont and.
Went after it for.
Martin Mallow, that he, that he worked for, um, they really did us a big favor and really helped us out. So, uh.
That's cool.
They went through it, too, a little bit.
They went through it. Um, there are some things that didn't work on it, that, um, taillights were broke, the turn signals didn't work. Um, I think we s- I think they spent, I think beautification spent seven hundred dollars in parts for it and sitting in DPW right now. And, uh, some, um, mirror, side mirrors, too.
Right.
So we're trying to get road, ro- ro- roadworthy, but the machine itself is in really good condition.
Yep.
So you need a motion to.
So the request is to add five grand to the ten K budget out of the two eighty-nine fund, uh.
Yes, and I would like to have it moving forward up to that amount, just like, because of all the increases and inflation and stuff. And it gives them the opportunity, you know, paint more buildings. Um, they've got, like, requests for trees in certain areas right now. Um, it, it would just be helpful for them to have a little bit more. They make it go a long way. They're all volunteers.
For the two eighty-nine, we've spent fifty K, and then going forward, we would do five K additional every year for beautification, is the ask?
Yes.
Beautification's at ten grand right now. And we spent seventy-eight hundred.
Need a motion? I make a motion for the.
Support.
Okay.
And thank you.
Ex for five grand.
Uh, we have a motion, uh, and we have support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for bringing that to, uh, the meeting, and thank you, uh, DDA Director Blackburn, for raising that topic in your chair. Uh, tabled and referred items, we have none, so I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Alright. I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
To support.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, thank you all so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Alright. Good enough, eh? Yeah. Yeah, I hope they bring that rock in here before they repave the tape. I'm a little worried. Oh, yeah.
Big wooden lift?